Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 6th meeting of the Foxborough School Committee. I'm Rob Camfield. I'm the vice chair of the school committee. Mr. Pearson, who is our chairperson, is not in town this evening, so I'm filling in for him. Any questions or comments? Thank you. So as we typically do, we start our meeting with any emails that have come in from the public forum. As of 3 o'clock this afternoon, we have received no email submissions since the last meeting, so thank you for participating in the past. We certainly do welcome your submissions going forward, but we have nothing for this evening for comment. Okay? So next on the agenda, Dr. Berdos, do you want to introduce the next section?
You want to go to minutes first?
Okay, we'll do the minutes first. Sounds good to me. So any questions on the meeting minutes from our last meeting, excuse me, from the March 9th meeting of the school committee? Any questions or comments on those minutes?
I had no changes to these minutes.
Mr. Ruder?
Very thorough, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So actually, in addition to Mr. Pearson not being with us tonight, I neglected to mention, Ms. Raymond is also not with us this evening, so it is just Mr. Ruder, Ms. Bellinger, and myself for the school committee this evening. So no questions, no comments, no changes to the meeting minutes. May I get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved.
And I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruder moved, Ms. Bellinger seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that is 300. Thank you very much on the meeting minutes. Now we'll move on to our next agenda item. Dr. Berdos.
All right. Our teaching and learning highlight this evening is going to be a little bit different of a highlight, and this highlight this evening is going to be highlighting Ms. Tina Bellinger. She has been serving on the school committee for the last nine years. We have many people that are joining us that are going to be speaking this evening as well, but I can't think of a more -- I just, it really is so fitting to highlight you because of all that you have done. The epitome of a volunteer, when I think all that you have done to serve the school committee the last nine years. You came on right after I arrived in Foxborough, has been a tremendous support to myself as the assistant superintendent, and then as the chair for me as superintendent, as a new superintendent here, your advisory, the AdCom time before here. So when we think about volunteers and those serving our schools, when we think back to Jack and Sam and when they entered the Taylor School, you have been serving in so many different ways, not only the schools, but all children in the Foxborough Public Schools, and the community at large. So I started thinking back to what are some of the things? And I started making some notes, and all I could come up with was countless hours, countless hours of meetings, countless hours of listening to constituents, countless hours of reading and preparing for school committee meetings, countless hours of budget subcommittee meetings, and of policy subcommittee meetings, and representing on so many other extra parts of school committee that people don't even realize, countless hours of fundraising efforts, countless hours in classrooms where you volunteered, even with Sam and Jack in their classrooms over the many, many years, countless hours of appearances at school functions and district functions. You always have been a staple at all of those. Countless counting of bricks, right? When we think about the beautiful bricks that are landscaped up the high school and the countless hours that you did, and I know you had a sidekick with Marilyn as well.
Definitely.
But I think about all the stories and experiences that you've brought to us and that you've been able to provide context or past practice. It really is invaluable, and some of the really funny stories, too, which have been great. So this last year, as well as the year before, with what we've never experienced and hope that we never experience again in public education, is probably the hardest years that you've served as school committee members and as chair even, with all that has taken place. When we think about, there's so many opinions, and none of them are wrong. Everyone has different feelings about how things should go, but all of the extra listening and emails and phone calls and time, and you've handled all of that with grace and with patience, and just really a level head and always supporting the Foxborough Public School children and the greater community, always. We are just so fortunate that you have served, and we've been lucky as a community to have you spend as much of your personal time, because we know you don't get paid for this. It truly is a volunteer gig, and what you have done and the amount of countless hours that you have volunteered is so appreciated by so many more people than just in this room that are on our Zoom call this evening. COVID has kept us from being able to have people in person, and so that dampened our plans a little here, but we have many people that are here on our call, and we're going to give them an opportunity to speak. But I'm going to first turn it over to Debbie Spinelli, since I know that she appreciates all of your work as much as I have, and then before we -- actually, you know what? Why don't I go to Richard first? Because he is the current chair of the school committee, and although he is out of town and not able to be here, he wasn't going to miss this either. So Richard, thank you from afar, even though you're not here for the real committee meeting this evening as far as for attendance, but I'll turn it over to Richard first.
Well, thank you very much, and there's many others that are going to speak here tonight, and I'll let them speak about their experiences and their exposure to you, Tina. But I just wanted to thank you for your time, my three years with you on the committee, plus all those years before I sat with you on the committee. And what I have remembered most about who you are and what you are is about your voice, and your voice as a parent and as an advocate for the town, and understanding the conditions of the town has been outstanding, and that is the greatest legacy you have left and that you continue to do up through this meeting as well. Your reason and your voice is just astounding, and I don't know if the public even understands how that comes to us at a school committee when you have to pay attention to all the details and all the little things that surround us in our community, but you've done a great job of articulating that, representing that with honesty and fidelity. So from my standpoint and from all the people that I know you affected in the town, thank you so very much for all that you have done. It's been a great career and a great representation for our town, and thank you.
Thanks, Richard. I really appreciate that.
So Ms. Spinelli.
Sure. Want me to go next? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Tina, anything I say will be an understatement, so let me just say that right up front. I totally agree with Amy, your work ethic, the countless hours you devoted to our kids in our town. People have no idea, really, how many things you spearhead and carry through, and sometimes the only one holding the ball at the end, but it gets over the line. But most of all, what I appreciated when I was a superintendent is you're so intelligent and you're so detail-oriented and so thorough that anything you were involved in, I always felt assured that it would come to fruition and be done in a way that was right and that was complete and that was valuable, and I truly appreciate that. But when I think of you, I think that, you know, everything you do and the decisions you make and the work that you do is always guided by a strong ethical and moral compass combined with a loving heart, and there's no better combination than that. So honored to know you personally as well, and I can't believe this is your last meeting because I thought you would be volunteer extraordinaire into perpetuity, but I'm sure you have other things that you would like to devote your talents to, and I look forward to hearing what those are. So congratulations on your last meeting, and thank you so much for everything you've done. You love this town and these kids and these schools in a way that, you know, other people would be honored to match, so thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. I appreciate that, and it's been such a pleasure to work with you over the years on so many different projects and search committees and on the school committee and with Dr. Berdos and everybody as well. Thank you. I really appreciate it. I'll have more time to go for hikes, though, now.
Yes, that's true. And don't forget, we got to have the dedication up at the high school and, you know, unveil the lovely bricks and the plaque, which was one of your last projects very recently.
That's right.
That'd be great.
Why don't we go next to Mr. Bruce Gardner, who is a former chair and many, many years on the Foxborough School Committee, and he might even be part of the reason that helped us to have Tina run for school committee.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
Well, geez, really difficult to follow Amy's words and Richard's words and Debbie's words because they were really eloquent and spot-on, and I'll try my best to be brief, Tina. You know, sometimes that's hard for me, but it's, first of all, it's a pleasure to be able to join you and the rest of the current committee. You guys have done just a wonderful job in the past year. I can't imagine what it would have been like to be on school committee during this period, but the five of you and Dr. Berdos and Mr. Yukna and the rest of the team have just done a really fantastic job. I just want to note that. Tina, outstanding service. Again, Amy and Rich and Debbie said it very, very well. I'll just try to add a story or two, but I do remember when we were at a joint meeting, I think, of the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to fill an empty seat, and you were kind enough for the community to put your name in the hat, and there was one other person at the time who was also really a strong candidate, was currently working in higher ed at a prestigious institution, and I know that the room was torn because we had two wonderful candidates in one chair, and the discussion came around to me, and I guess I had to break the tie, and I said, you know, the one thing that I can think that really cast the vote towards Tina, I think, is that I've gotten many, many parent notes in support of Tina's candidacy to join the school committee. And, you know, you've been so true to that initial feeling from the community that you belong there in just how you've represented so many families and so many students, and really, you know, you were the conscience for the committee in representing the town, in representing all those parents, all those Facebook posts, all those social media inputs. You would read them, you would take time to respond to them, and you took them all deeply to heart. I'm so very thankful that you did run. I mentioned at Mrs. Lord's retirement celebration that the three of us really teamed quite well together for a number of years, and now I think you've been the bridge to the next generation of the school committee, and you've done that in just model fashion, so many, many stories. We'll talk about them another time when we can.
Yes.
But heartfelt congratulations, well-earned, and Amy, thank you for allowing us to join the meeting tonight.
Thanks, Bruce. It was an honor to serve with you for the six years that we were on the committee together, and I definitely don't think I would have put my name into the hat without some arm twisting on your part and others, but it has been such an honor and a privilege to serve on this committee. So I thank you for your support over the years and for being such a wise sounding board and for teaching me so many different things through your leadership of this committee over the years.
Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you.
We're really happy that Michelle Gardner can join us as well this evening. If we could have friends here in Town Hall if it weren't the times we were living in right now. So Michelle, thank you for joining, too.
Thank you for having me. I won't add much to my husband's, just to say that as a fellow room mother back to first grade and a friend, I've been so appreciative of everything you've done and so proud of you. Congratulations.
Thanks, Michelle. Michelle, and I see Kelly Blair up there on Zoom, and they're probably my most ardent supporters and two of my best friends here in town and have been voluntold on many occasions to help with many of our service projects, so it's been such a wonderful, gosh, now it's about 15 years together. But yes, I met, Michelle and I probably partnered on my very first volunteer experience, which was first-grade room parent, and I think Kelly talked me into volunteering as a library volunteer at the Taylor School when our kids were in first grade as well, which is one of my all-time favorite jobs that I have done, you know, as a volunteer. I loved being in the library, and actually, I helped, everything was written that first year. Everything was written. We were still using the Dewey Decimal System and the card catalog, and I helped digitize the library when we went, when we converted to all computers. I spent a lot of time helping the librarian get that all set up, so it was interesting stuff, but I couldn't have done it without my friends who are here with us tonight.
You have made your mark in many ways, aside from going digitizing from the library.
I remember one time with the library when they painted it. We had to move before they digitized it. We just moved all the books down to the first-grade classrooms, and then we had to move them back and restock all the shelves. It was a lot of fun. It was.
How about we go to --
Very glamorous.
Absolutely.
Kelly, we're so glad you were able to join us, too.
Thanks for having me, T. I didn't think I'd see this day, my friend. Thank you for everything you did for my own children, for your children, for all the students of FPS, because, man, you worked hard and you did an awesome job, and I can't wait to celebrate in person with some nice champagne that your husband's going to buy us and sit outside by the fire and see what your next chapter's going to bring.
Looking forward to that, and I definitely couldn't have done it without my sounding boards and the people who listened to me and helped me work through a lot of the more difficult decisions that we've had here at the table over the years. So you've certainly listened to all of my thought processes over the years, and I appreciate it very, very much, and you can keep a secret because you didn't tell me about this at all. We talk every single day. Wow.
So we'll go to --
Not always, but this time I did.
We're going to save the best for last, which I'm sure you see some people that are very close to you up there, but let me go to a couple of other former school committee members first. So Ms. Bevy Lord, how about we go to you next? You're on mute, Ms. Lord.
I'm not usually on mute.
That's true.
True statement.
This is not your lucky break. foremost, what I would like to say is, please, and with the rest of the voting of your meeting, I want us all to recognize that Michelle Raymond is a full part of this array, and she was trying to vote on that first thing. Come on, Michelle. Let's give her credit, and I want to take full responsibility for getting Bruce Gardner on the school committee. Would you agree, Bruce? Yes, and your many years of service. Tina, everybody is saying all kinds of things about you all through your volunteer work throughout the schools. I know that I would be remiss if I personally did not thank you for the valued three years of your constant care, supervision, and insight that you put into the advisory committee.
Thanks.
And that coupled with the nine years on the school committee is true, true commitment to the community in which you and your husband chose to raise your children. There were three main things I want to say about you, and they go from me to a very personal level, because that's what I feel life is all about, with all our traipsing of contributing. I taught for 25 years in Foxborough and followed the school committee. I served on the school committee for 16 years, and I promise you, I have never seen one other person devote the time you did to carefully reading everything. You worked closely with all our lawyers, wordsmithing to make sure that every single i was dotted, t was crossed, and put in the vast verbiage possible. And what I even admire more than that is what you've done on your deepest personal level, and that is with your family. I was so excited last year when you became chair and Sam became president of the student government. No one knew the year that was going to unroll ahead of you. The two of you have that delight, pain, and sorrow to work through. It has deepened both of you. It has deepened all who know you, I believe. You unfortunately reaffirmed what some of the negative things that can be about human beings in life, and, boy, for Sam to learn that, what could possibly happen and possibly go wrong in his senior year, he will walk, he will walk the rest of his life with a wisdom that most young people don't have. And then I was sitting in the audience the year you gave the graduation speech when Jack was graduating, and when this moment happened, I said, oh, I wish Tina could see this. I was right in front, and Jack was right in his front row, and when you finished your speech, now, this may not be verbatim, but this is the whole heartfelt that I took from what Jack said. Anyway, he said something, he shouted it because people were applauding, so he shouted it. He said, "You rock, Mom," and he gave the air a punch. And so that, my lady, is how I want to leave you. And then, I always threatened to do this at the school committee meeting, but I never dared, because we were on school --
Okay.
Seeing as COVID has barred me from town property and being the town meeting, my dear, I am saluting you with a full glass of champagne. You rock, Tina.
Thank you, Bevy. I appreciate it. Oh, thank you, Bevy. It's been an honor to serve with you over the years, and thank you for acknowledging the advisory committee service. That was a long three years, and I learned a lot about our town and our budgeting and how our finances work in the town of Foxborough, and it was an honor. My boys were very little in, I was on the advisory committee from 2009 to 2012, and I had to hire a lot of babysitters to come and stay with them so I could go to AdCom meetings, and my mom, who's watching at home, came and babysat, and my husband, you know, had to come home early a few times so that I could do my volunteer opportunity, and I appreciate you recognizing that because that was really an intense three years as well, so. But it has been an honor to serve with you and with everybody else on the committee over the years.
So one other person you served with, Ms. Marilyn Weiss.
I see Marilyn. I spoke with Marilyn on the phone earlier today, and she kept this secret. I, you know, a lot of closed-mouth people. I'm not surprised that my husband kept this secret because he's a very good, he's a very good secret keeper, but the rest of this crew, wow. Hi, Marilyn.
Mute.
Marilyn, you're muted.
There we go.
Hey, good.
Hi, guys. Tina, we go back a very, very long way. Even before school committee, which, as Bruce was taking credit for you, I'm going to give you credit for me. And the other person here knows who the other person was also that twisted my arm beyond the school committee. We go back a long time. Even before school committee, we were on so many town school boards together behind the scenes. We did budget committees together, we did union negotiations together, and as Amy said, we countered those darn bricks over and over again back in the back alleys of the high school.
The boiler room.
You brought nothing but wonderful things to our town, helping the children over the years. Accolades to you for everything you've given to our town. It is so appreciated, and I loved working with you, and we have friends for life now.
Absolutely, Marilyn, and thank you for all your support over the years. I think we got to know each other way back when Dr. Martis was doing his parent leader meetings a long, long time ago, before the high school renovation project, and, I mean, probably your kids were in middle school, mine were in elementary at the time, so we do go way back. But yes, the brick project wouldn't have happened without your help, so we spent a lot of time selling those bricks.
On time.
Proofing the bricks, and now they're all installed. They look great, so thank you for your help with that, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we go to your lovely family, we have one of our former students, Mr. Joey Garrity, who is there, and Joe is going to say a couple of words.
Long time no see, everyone.
It's great to see you, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
Oh, and then, Mrs. Bellinger, I want to thank you so much for a few things, and then I got something good to say about Mr. Gardner at the end. A memory from Mr. Gardner at the end, but a few with Mrs. Bellinger. One, I'm glad that you were off, I'm glad, let me think, what's a better word? I'm glad that we were neighbors these last five years, four years before COVID. We were still neighbors, but before COVID, I wanted to thank you so much for giving me a ride home from school committee meetings, ride home from the concerts a few times, the basketball games, the High School Boys, football games when Jack was on the Vi City team.
That's right.
And then the time that you gave me a ride to the concert was when David and Maureen were away on an international trip.
That's right.
Then I just want to thank you for all your service that you've given to the students in Foxborough over the years, and to the high school athletics and the Ahern School.
Thanks, Joey. It has been a pleasure, and you've certainly asked me some very thought-provoking and wonderful questions over the years, lots of them, and you've helped me remember things and kept track of dates and agendas and schedules for me, and anytime you need a ride, you know where to find me. So you're just down the street, so it's been my pleasure to know you, and you've certainly brought a lot of added value to our meetings. I think everybody would agree with that, right? So thanks, Joey, for being here.
And then I kept you on your feet a little too much during COVID, then I think.
Oh, can't hear him.
I have a little technical difficulty.
Yeah, I think you're muted, kiddo. Sir.
All right, Joey, thank you for joining us, and then we're going to go who's closest to Tina. We have her lovely sons, Jack and Sam, that are here joining us this evening, and our lovely husband, Bill, who's here as well, so I'll give them an opportunity if they'd like to say hello.
Just briefly, I know we gave a lot of thought to, when we moved to Massachusetts, what town and what school system we would raise our sons, and I want to say thank you on our behalf to everyone collected here for all your support over the years. I could not have asked for a better school system or a better community than the one that we've found ourselves in, and appreciative that we were able to give something back to the other children in the community, because you all definitely gave a lot to our family, and so thank you. And Kelly, I will definitely set you up with champagne and a fire pit.
That I know, girl. You're very generous, yes.
I do remember Bruce certainly --
She owns Liquor Store, doesn't she?
-- at that first meeting as to which way he would vote, but we're appreciative, voted for Tina and put her on the school committee for these past several years.
As is usual, my husband is a much more eloquent speaker than I am, and I do echo what he had to say. I mean, we did put a lot of thought into where we would raise our family, and we feel very, very fortunate to have landed in Foxborough, and I couldn't have done my volunteer service on this -- on this committee without my husband's full support, so thank you for that. He's supported me in everything that I've ever wanted to do, both inside and outside our house, so thanks, Bill. That's amazing, so.
Jack or Sam, not to put you on the spot, but did you want to say, say like, "Mom, you rock," or?
Well, I guess I'll go first, since I'm the older one. Yeah, Mom, you do rock. Pretty sure you've been doing this for the majority of my school career and college career, for that matter. And just the fact that, like, you've put in so much of yourself, just not only into me and Sam and our family, but into our whole community and into the lives of just so many people is just something that's incredibly inspiring, and it's like, I'm just very, very proud of you, and I love you.
You're gonna make me cry. Thank you, Jack.
Good job.
And I guess I'll go now. So I wanted to start by saying thank you, Mrs. Lord, for the compliment. I don't know if my mom would necessarily use wisdom and my name in the same sentence, but.
She's gonna have to learn to.
I appreciate the compliment, because any compliment directed towards me really always goes back to my mom, because no matter how great she was as like a public servant and everything, she was an even better mom, and I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for her. And just watching her work and dedicate herself to the community over the past years is a real inspiration, and the whole town's thankful for it, and especially me, Jack, and my dad, for sure. So thank you for everything, Mom, and I love you.
Love you too, Sam. Thank you for that. And I have to say that at the end of last school year, that Sam was truly my inspiration and taught me a lot about grace under pressure and dealing with adversity. I'm not necessarily the most adaptable person, and Sam had a lot of words of wisdom for me. And his poise as a, as senior class president in dealing with some of the extreme challenges of the pandemic and its consequences for his class and himself personally, helped me get through. I remember he and I watched Governor Baker's announcement in May that basically pulled the plug on the rest of the year for our kids. And Sam was very stoic, and I cried my eyes out, and he hugged me and said, "It's gonna be okay. It's not, you know, it's not the end of the world. We will get through this." And, you know, I couldn't have done any of this volunteer service without the support of my family and without my, my sons. I probably volunteered more than they wished I did in the school. I was there a lot when they were in elementary school and middle school and high school too, but it was my pleasure, and I'm a very, very lucky mom and wife and, and volunteer, school committee member, so thank you all. I didn't, I didn't expect this, so I'm sorry. I'm babbling. I didn't really prepare anything. This is an amazing surprise, and I feel so honored and blessed. Thank you for arranging this, and it's great to see my kids who are at school and everybody else that I miss serving with, and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the others that I served on the committee with, Mr. Connolly, Mr. Uden, Katie Adair, Martha Slattery. I don't, I think that's everybody, and everyone who's up on the screen and everyone who's in this room. It's been a pleasure to serve with everybody. I've learned something from everyone that I have served with over the years, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful experience, beginning to end. Thank you. We thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you for the beautiful flowers. They're gorgeous.
I'll turn it back over to you since I took your agenda.
No, you're great. Thank you so much. So thank you all for joining us this evening. Tina, I hate to follow Bill, Jack, and Sam, but I did want to just share my own words with you. I agree with everything everybody said. When I think of you, and I knew you prior to school committee, and that's always my first impression, through the Boy Scouts, I should just tell everybody else what that, what I was saying there, right? And how gracious you and your family were to my son and myself as he was joining the troop. But when I think of you and all the many things that you do, and we're still going to be learning over the next months and probably years, all the places that you filled in the gaps that the rest of us didn't even know there, where there were gaps on the school committee, so appreciative of all that, but the word that comes to mind for me mostly is just grace. Everything that you've done, in my experience with you, has been done with grace and with poise, and, you know, take the attention to detail and the intelligence and the integrity out of it. It's just, you'll, when I question how to respond to things, I often ask myself, "How would Tina handle this?" And the answer always comes back to just that one word, which is "with grace." And so I just want to thank you for that and let you know that I'll try to work in that same way, regardless of how long I'm staying with the school committee, but that will have an impact with me as I continue volunteering in whatever way I continue to volunteer, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Rob, and it's been wonderful to serve with you the last couple of years on the committee, and we had fun during Bo's tenure with seven. It was all good.
Yes.
It was all good.
Thank you. Anybody else? So.
Is there a tip?
Of course.
Tina, you've been on the school committee the whole time that I've been coming to the school committee, pretty much, and during that time, I second what everybody said. You've been an incredible advocate for students and families, but you are by far, your impact is immeasurable. You're the most detail-oriented person. If there's ever a typo in the minutes, you find it. If there's ever an activity going on, on other matters, you know it. You're just so actively involved in the town, and it seems like your commitment to service is really unparalleled, and I agree with Bevy that I've never, never seen anything like it. So I'm wondering, because you're like our historian, and because you know so much, maybe you could stay on as our social media monitor and our liaison and our historian, because you still have a lot, you know, just on the side.
Well played.
You can continue to help us that way.
Well played.
Because nobody else has that.
Very well played.
Perhaps an informal.
Sorry, was that a motion? Can I say?
Thank you. Honestly, thank you. You've always been so supportive of everything, and while advocating for students and families, you've also been a champion for the different things that we've had in the schools, and it's been really appreciated by me personally, so thank you.
Thank you. We've had a lot of, a lot of in-depth conversations about different things over the year, math cohorts and Exchange City.
Yes.
Has been quite the experience over the years as well, and all the interviews and all of that. But you have always been generous with your time in answering my many questions based on reading, all the materials. You've always taken the time to really explain things, and I have appreciated that and learned so much from you and Dr. Berdus and Mrs. Spinelli and just everybody involved. I'm not an educator, so I come from a place of no knowledge in education, and I feel like I have learned so much from the great educators I've been privileged to work with on the school committee.
You are an educator.
Yes, you are, and we're grateful for your questions.
You are.
Because they make us think, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruder, Ms. Raymond, any other before we move on?
Tina, I'll thank you for not dissuading me from running for school committee. In fact, I can look at the Zoom call and in the room and count at least eight heads of people who are the reason that I'm doing this, and you were so kind, and I can't thank you for the countless hours, and it was hours, of mentorship you gave me last year, as it was my first full year through while you were chair, and there was an interesting year, to say the least. So thank you for your patience with me, and thank you for being an educator.
Thank you for that, Brent, and it's been wonderful to work with you and with Michelle, and truly, if I didn't feel the school committee was moving in a really wonderful, positive direction, I wouldn't be stepping away. So I, this is my vote of confidence in you all, for sure, in what we're doing here at the table. So thank you for running, and Michelle as well, and Richard for choosing to run again, so we'll just continue that.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Michelle, first, my apologies. I'm sorry. I didn't see that you were on the screen, so I really do truly apologize. I wrote down in the notes to make sure that we collect in the minutes that you were a part of the meeting. I apologize.
That's okay, Rob. Not a problem. And Tina, I would just mirror everything that Brent just said. Thank you so much for, you know, I remember, you know, it was more than a year ago, you know, you reaching kind of, you know, out to me at a gathering and saying, you know, you might want to think one time, one day of running for, for the school committee, and I remember that, and I, I really do appreciate all of the hard work. I see it, and the mentorship, and really, you know, kind of as Brent said, is the teaching. So we're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss your bright, cheery face at the, at the meetings, and, you know, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Michelle. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and as I said, I know the committee is in very good hands going forward, and I'm glad you opted to run as well last year. Thank you.
Thank you. So, and with that, Tina, we still have other things on the agenda.
I know. We have a meeting. We gotta get down to business.
Not out of here yet.
For joining us this evening.
I feel so honored. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everybody.
Appreciate you guys taking time out of your evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Berdus, back over to you.
All right, so for superintendent update, my most exciting part here, when we say a picture speaks a thousand words, I'm going to let some pictures speak for some of my words this evening, being that we started back with kindergarten through fifth grade yesterday for a full return. So I, just I have a few slides here just to show some pictures. We had a great welcome back to our K-5 students yesterday, and it was really because of all of the planning from the administration to the teachers, to the staff. It just was really successful transportation, food service, you name it. So as I go through, I'll just highlight, first of all, if you think about our elementary students, here's a picture of them, these are second graders with Ms. Parsons on a Teams call for Spanish. So if you think about our specialist teachers, whether it's music, or Spanish, or art, or library, or wellness, they've not been able to see their students in a classroom setting this entire school year. They've been on a computer. They will tell you the best part of that is they're able to see their smiles by not having their mask on. So being able to say goodbye to remote learning for specials was really exciting for our specialist teachers.
Sure.
So you can see all of those smiles there. They will be still smiling under the mask and are yesterday and today, but they're really excited to have them back physically in front of them in classrooms. Here, you can see wellness outside. The weather's really working for us, being in the gym there, again, following all the safety protocols that we need to follow, but being able to be with them physically has been just such a treat yesterday and today. Recession. Our elementary students, being that they've been in school every day for at least, you know, K to four, not our fifth graders here, but K to four, they've not had recess because of being a morning and an afternoon. So the introduction back to recess was, we know how important that is for the social aspect for students, yes, for physical health as well, but just being able to be outside with their friends and having both cohorts together. Lunch. You can see we have mini spaces here. This is the burrow. This is in the cafeteria where we have our desk. You see a group space there in the bottom where they're all smiles and having lunch, and they've not had lunch in schools this year. So if you think about for kindergartners, this is their first time to have lunch in school, so it's been really exciting, and the smiles really just say it all. So at the IGO, here's some pictures here. You can see the classroom. We're really fortunate, and I think one of the other things that these pictures show our, our class sizes, we have, we're so fortunate in Foxborough with our reasonable class sizes to be able to have students, so even with them back full, you can see the space that's there. Taylor, here's some extra spaces that we use for lunch, even aside from being, you know, in a lunchroom, or having the recess, or being outdoors, and the weather is really going to help us as we move forward to the end of the school year. Again, just some classroom pictures so you can see what it looks like in our classrooms. We still have students that are, their desks have to be facing forward. We have them spaced. We know they need to be three to six feet, and honestly, when we think about the spacing and where they are, it's, it's really more like four, five feet in our classrooms. So we're really, you know, happy that they're all back together, but we still have the space that's, that's needed to be able to meet all of the safety protocols. So our fifth graders, having them come back on Monday, they were so excited and just talking with them, from being able to ride the bus with friends in the other cohort, being able to sit outside, as you can see, at lunch, being in the courtyard, or being there in the cafeteria. So we have many lunch locations. We have many lunches, so a lot of planning, you know, on the administration side with our principals and assistant principals and custodians and food service, and we want to continue to remind families, you know, one of the things that we learned is that not everyone had signed up on the online system, so more directions have been sent out for families. If they have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to be able, we, of course, made sure everyone had lunch, but again, lunch, there's no cost to lunch for the remainder of the school year, too. So just fifth grade classrooms, you can see our Cohort A and Cohort B students where they're back together in classrooms, and as we walk through classrooms, just talking with them. They're excited to have their friends, they're excited to have back the structure of the school day, and teachers are really spending the time and working with students to bring that classroom community of Cohorts A and B together. But it's still, it's like the first day of school yesterday, going back to September. We've talked about how the, the students are going to be really tired, you know, by the end of the week, by having that different schedule. But it was really successful transportation with buses, so happy to see so many of our students back riding the buses, and even with arrival and dismissal, you know, little things that we need to tweak, making sure that parents don't drop students off too early is really important, but principals are sending out any of those kinds of reminders to families, and really successful. We're really excited to continue, and then to see our sixth through 12th graders return full in person after April vacation. So it really is a huge thank you to all of the administration that has worked so hard with scheduling. We had these plans back in August, but once you implement them, and knowing what we've learned from the beginning of the year, it's, it's a lot of time and a lot of problem solving and thinking, what have we missed, and then having someone mention something and then go back and, you know, jump that hurdle. But our faculty, our staff, throughout all of the schools, everyone plays such a critical role for it to be successful. So part of my update is just to say thank you to everyone, and we're just so excited to have Cohorts A and B together as a community. So before I go on to my couple of other updates, you know, if you had any questions or anything else that comments just based on returning back to school for K to five yesterday.
It's just super exciting to see the kids back in the classrooms and see how they're set up, and the lunchrooms, and the borough school, I saw some of our new construction. You could see the, the open space, and it's awesome to see that in use. And I just wanted to have a shout out to Dennis and Kathy in transportation, because I know they worked overtime to make sure all the bus routes were reconfigured as necessary, and having the fifth graders go every day in the two different cohorts at the Ahern is, they're wizards over there in transportation, so thank you. Kudos to them for all their extra work, and everybody, because I'm sure all of our administrators have been working overtime to make sure every single detail is in place and ready for our kids, and I know our, our middle school and high school administrators can't wait for their kids to come back on the 26th, right?
I just want to, I just want to say congratulations. I mean, I know that this is just the first step of many as we try to create another type of normal, but it, I can't imagine the excitement, not only from the students, but from the faculty, to have people back in schools at full capacity or close to full capacity, and a joyful noise that was happening in all those elementary schools. I know the middle school is probably, the fifth graders, I can imagine, may actually enjoy being alone in the school by themselves a little bit for a time period, but I just appreciate. They do. All of the hard work that it went into this, appreciate. Appreciate families' patience as all the plans were worked through and their support in making this happen. And just congratulations.
So, as we come back to school, one of the things that we do have to think about, which is very real, is thinking about April vacation that is coming. So, we know that at the state level, the travel, it's now a travel advisory from where it was a travel order before, which means that if you are returning from somewhere outside of Massachusetts, that before with the travel order, you needed to retain, you needed to obtain a negative test within 72 hours of leaving or quarantine when you returned. Now, with the travel advisory, that's not the case anymore. However, we would like to say, please, really think, we strongly suggest, recommend, that although it's an advisory now, that we still have our families really think about that, because we want to be able to have our students in school. So, although it is an advisory and it's not required anymore, it's really important for people to, the self-checker, to really continue to be diligent with what we know is what's going to keep our students in school. I only had a couple of other updates. We had our elementary virtual town hall. We've had our middle school virtual town hall. Those were recorded. They're both on websites. If parents weren't able to view them. We have our high school virtual town hall that's coming up on the 14th. So, that is, there also bus routes for sixth through 12th grade. That has, I'll talk about with Dennis and Kathy and all the work, those have been updated, and the bus routes are on the website as well. One other update is with graduation. So, typically, we are a 2:00 in the afternoon graduation. We are going to back that up to 11:00 in the morning, because being outside and being on the turf field, I don't know, Bill, if you'd like to talk a little bit there about the difference in temperature and why it's important for us to kind of move to an earlier time.
Yeah. I mean, the, if it's a nice sunny day, which obviously we all hope it is, the turf field tends to be about 10 degrees warmer than regular grass or another surface. So, obviously, it makes much more sense than to be in the middle of the afternoon when it could be a very hot day, to try to get the little cooler part of the day. It's still a couple hour, you know, proceeding. So, you know, don't want to be there 2:00 to 4:00 at the heat of the day trying to do it. So, I think it's a wise idea to move it. Obviously, we would still very much impress on people to bring, you know, bottled water, not regular drinks, because that's all we allow on the field is regular water. But, you know, just to stay hydrated and stuff. But it is, it is the condition of the field that it's, you know, it's beautiful to be able to use the way we can use it, because it's all weather, all purpose. But it is a warmer surface. So, therefore, we just want to protect the people as best we can.
And there's still, as you can imagine, many, many details being worked out of what this is going to look like and any updates that we have, as we talked about at the last school committee meeting as well, because we know it's not going to look like our traditional graduations. But we will be able to be outdoors, and the field is going to allow that to happen.
Dr. Berdus, I actually have a question about graduation and our musicians. Are we going to be able to have the band play at graduation?
Based on the guidance that's come out, you're not going to be able to have a group that close together.
Not even outside?
No. They still have to be 10 feet apart from each other. So, to be able to have the ensemble and the band together, unless things change, that's what the guidance is at this point in time.
Yep.
I wonder if we could do a recording of them playing Pump in Circumstance, you know, our own band to use.
Yes. I would fully anticipate that that would take place with the talent that we have.
Sure.
I don't want to speak for the high school and the planning, but...
I don't mean to mix in. This is not my area. But I just, it's one other special aspect of graduation that, you know, was missing last year. And if, I know our musicians have really not been able to perform for their parents and their peers this year. And if, I understand that we have to follow the guidelines as they are, but if there were any way to incorporate their music into the ceremony, I think it would be so wonderful.
My last update is on Thursday, April 1st, Commissioner Riley announced that he's going to recommend to the Board of, this is about MCAS, he's going to recommend to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education that they modify the state graduation requirement for the class of 2022. So, if it's approved, that means our juniors, our 11th graders, would not be required to take the MCAS. In addition, the timeline for administering tests for the grades three through eight, and then our sophomores, who at this point in time are still required to take the MCAS, would be extended. So, we'd have the maximum flexibility as far as in timing. So, current juniors and seniors, however, they could still take the MCAS if they were interested because of qualifying for the John and Abigail Adams and the Coplik Award. So, that's a scholarship that, by how you perform on MCAS. So, if they wanted to do that, they could. Juniors, at the same time, if they didn't participate, they would be able to test for scholarships if they chose to do so.
Okay.
You know, the other part I'll just mention is that I, along with superintendents across the state, we wrote letters to Senators Markey and Warren Frost and Congressman Auchincloss to really advocate, because it has to be at the federal level, for them to advocate to Secretary Cardona that the state testing should be waived at this point in time, because we need to focus on bringing students back to school, and that the testing itself is not going to serve the purpose of what we need to do with our own students and to best prepare them. So, I've received, you know, responses back from them, that they've received those letters and that they're advocating as well. We also had a call with Congressman Auchincloss for a different purpose and was able to express that when we were on that call with other boards and the, as far as Bill Keegan and other, you know, the board selectmen and AdCom and representations as well, to really say that this is not the time to be able, to be able to focus. We need to have them advocate at the federal level for us. So, just wanted to mention that. As part of that, we were very pleased to see that he is going to be recommending that for juniors, but we'd also like to see that for our sophomores as well.
Agreed. Agreed.
Well, thank you for your advocacy on that. I think we're all in agreement here that that would be the best course of action if it's possible. So, appreciate that.
Any questions or comments, Michelle?
No. Bren, you good? Thank you.
No, I just want to say thank you for the Herculean effort of you and your team for the, it takes a huge amount of effort to put down the paper plans, and then it's two-thirds more work to actually begin to implement them, and then another third on top of that. So, now we're at five-thirds for actually recollecting the feedback and tweaking the plans. So, thank you for, to everybody on your team for working on this. And then the only other thing I'll say, because I don't want to wait till Other Matters, is I'll repeat what I said before the Thanksgiving break to just anybody who's listening, is please don't be the reason my kids can't go to school. Be responsible during April break. We don't have that much left in the rest of the year. So, you said it much nicer than I did, Ms., Dr. Berdus.
And next on the agenda is Seal of By Literacy.
Yes. So, we have a special guest here with us. Christine Smith is here to talk a little bit about the Seal of By Literacy. And you'll remember that in 2019, we started to offer this opportunity for our students to be recognized for their high level of functional and academic proficiency in English and an additional world language. And I think Christine will talk a little bit about how that applies to students' native language as well. So, the distinction for our students is really to recognize that this is something exceptional for students to achieve. And the state is requiring us to actually award an actual seal to the students, that they can affix to their diploma or their transcript. And it's a one-inch by one-inch seal. And Christine's going to talk a little bit about where we are with that and how we want to honor and recognize our students who've earned this wonderful distinction. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, Senorita.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me this evening. I did pull together, I don't know, a little short presentation. I don't know if we want to share it or not, if it's easier to have a visual. But basically, the Seal of By Literacy is run by the state of Massachusetts, by DESI. And as a district that awards the Seal of By Literacy, it is part of their regulations that we must affix the unaltered state insignia on the diploma or the transcript or both of those students who meet the requirements. So, that's what kind of brought me here tonight. I was informed that if we were going to add something to the diploma, that we wanted to inform school committee and just let you know that that might be happening. So, we're still kind of working out if it's, we're going to be able to add that seal to the diploma, or if we're able to add it to the transcript. But with COVID, I think the company we've been working with to get this lovely seal has had a little bit of delay. So, I wasn't able to bring a sample before you tonight. But we just wanted to let you know that that's something that we would very much like to do in order to be in compliance with the state regulations.
It also really helps colleges know that students have achieved this. It's an important recognition. And it makes sense. We did note it on their transcript last year, but we didn't have the actual seal. And the state has actually done a revision on what the seal actually looks like. And so, because of that, as Senorita mentioned, it has been challenging to get the actual seal, because they decided to change it and require us to have it, and it's in short supply because of COVID. So, the fun.
Yes, all of those things. Thank you.
Are you embossing?
Thank you. Yep. That is all, that is all true.
And the seal, a copy of the image of the seal was provided to school committee, Senorita. So, they do have it in their memo so that they can see what the new seal looks like.
We do.
Right. Yeah. And the transcript really is an important place for it to go, because it is that piece of paper that will forever indicate that they have accomplished this skill upon graduation and this accomplishment. So, but it's also on graduation day. I do feel there should be a way for them to, you know, recognize and see that seal and know that they are graduating, having achieved a level of proficiency in both English and one other language. And just to talk about numbers, we have our second testing of this year coming up next week. And last year, we did have 14 students graduate with the Seal of By Literacy. A lot of those were qualified through taking the Spanish AP exam as juniors. This past year, last year, when the Spanish AP exam was taken, it was only, it only counted for one skill. It only counted for their speaking skill. So, we will have a little bit of dip in numbers this year for students graduating with the Seal of By Literacy. But the cool thing is that our numbers in students who are taking advantage of this proficiency testing, especially juniors, who are now looking forward to their senior year and graduating with this honor, the juniors are definitely all on board. And we have about 21 students coming up this next week testing their proficiency. Another exciting thing is that we have a heritage Spanish speaker who will be testing. And then we also have a student who has opted to test her speaking skills and her heritage language of Hindi. So, maybe that's something we should test one skill this year and increase in testing the other skills next year. Or you can just graduate and have that, that skill, what's the word I want to say, you have the noted, the noted skill that you are of a intermediate high or advanced low, even just in the speaking of a different language. You may not get the Seal of By Literacy in it, but even just to put that into your applications is another reason why it's really great for this proficiency testing to be offered. And we really do want to get more of our students who are heritage speakers involved in the process, just to really honor and respect their culture and as members of our community, too.
So, just to wrap up here, we will keep you posted on where this goes with our seal. Last year, there was an insert inside the diploma to recognize the students. And this year, hopefully, we'll be able to move to either the seal on the transcript. Or I know, I know Senorita has a lot of ideas. So, thank you for updating us on where you are exactly in the process and for your continued efforts to pursue this for our students.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that downboozes to Other Matters.
Can you start?
Please.
So, I just have one, and that is just to circle back to the Zoom call that we had with Congressman Auchincloss. It was a week and a half ago, I think. And a number of town board members were on that call. And we were talking about the American Rescue Plan Act, the SER III funds, that it will be coming into the town, as well as what we'll see is that third grant. And part of that is the funds, what we're proposing that they be used for, you know, from the town, what that will look like. So, we're planning a joint board meeting that will take place. I don't know the date of that yet, so just kind of wanted to mention it, so we would have the different town boards. I mean, we have a separate amount of funds that come to the schools that's different from the town. But at the same time, the amount that comes into the town, how we all constantly work together, that's in the best interest of the community itself, as well as the schools, and being able to support. So, Bill, did you want to, I'll just jump to you. You can add a little bit more there if you'd like.
Yeah. I think, I think we discussed this at the last meeting. But one of the decisions that we're looking to push forward is that the SER III grant would be actually pushed into the FY '22 budget year. We have been fortunate to use the SER I and II plus the CARES Act grants to cover our expenses and our costs over the last year and really advance, obviously, our technology. But we do know that there are going to be children with learning gaps and other areas where we're going to need to bolster up next year. And while it's a one-year, hopefully, maybe a little bit more need, it's nice that we won't be asking the taxpayers to support that, that we will use these funds, that we've put them aside to basically give us the resources to do that. So, I think that's, it's a responsible way of looking at it. But I also think it's a good plan for us. As Dr. Berdus said, we're also looking at, the town's getting a couple different trunks. They're going to get some money from the county side of things, and potentially, they're going to get some money that's directly coming into the town itself. And so, what we're also looking at is some one-time events, if you will, that these grants are basically key towards. We have thrown out one thing, which is the air conditioning system over at the Ahern, which is now 22 years old, and the big chillers, which I think a couple of years ago, if some of you remember, we had to replace one of the compressors on at a tune of about $55,000, which only lasted about three years. So, you know, these units are in the $200,000 range apiece. But everything under the federal grants and stuff talks about HVAC advancing, improving, and working on. It's a perfect solution, obviously, to not having to ask the taxpayers for the money, but, you know, because we're all going to be paying for this over time anyway. But at least we'll be using it in a resource. It's a one-time event that buys the town another 20 years on something. So, that's been one of our proposals to the town. To be honest with you, we don't have a lot of other proposals of needs, because we've been very fortunate to be able to take care of most of them. So...
Thank you.
That's all I had for Other Matters.
Thank you. Bren, any other...
Quick follow-up. Is there similar opportunity at Taylor? I know we've talked at length years ago about that, but I know it's a different system.
No. Well, the Taylor is actually, from a heating point of view, is brand new. We did that a few years ago. The problem with both the Taylor and the high school and even the IGO, as far as air conditioning goes, is that those are major, major projects. You know, you're talking in the millions of dollar range, and the only logical time to really do them is when you are doing a major renovation.
Full renovation, okay.
Unfortunately, the high school wasn't done at the time. Only components of the high school were done. But again, to go back there now, you're probably talking about a two and a half million dollar proposition. And, you know, just, well, it's just not the resources for that.
Understood. No, thank you for the context.
Thank you. Michelle, any other matters this evening? Okay. Thank you. Kiara?
I'd like to thank Mrs. Ballinger as well. When I first walked into the school committee about a year ago, I believe, I was incredibly nervous. And you said hello to me when I first walked in, which, believe it or not, really calmed me down. I felt way more comfortable. So, thank you for that. And I also want to thank you that, on behalf of all of Foxborough students, and I realize that all of your hard work has been done for us, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you and congratulations.
Aw, thanks, Kiara. I appreciate that. And one of my favorite parts of our school committee meetings has always been the viewpoints of our student representatives. And you and Chris did a wonderful job last year, and I appreciate you zooming in and joining us this year and kind of going above and beyond, really. But it's always an incredibly valuable viewpoint to have the student voice at the table. And I appreciate that you do this in addition to all of the other things that you're doing. And good luck next year at college, and congratulations on graduating. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Dr. Mello, I did not mean to neglect you. I apologize.
Totally fine. I just want to make sure that I mentioned that for our rising kindergarten families out there, we have our kindergarten information night this Thursday. families out there, we have our kindergarten information night this Thursday, it will be right here on Foxborough Cable Access, special thanks to Mike Weber, at 6:30, and it's a 45-minute program to just acquaint families with kindergarten, a day in the life in kindergarten, some of the services and the paperwork that comes along with beginning kindergarten, and we'll also orient you with our kindergarten website, so we hope to see lots of families there.
And I'll just tag on and say, as far as our elementary, I'd like to give credit to them for the photos this evening because I couldn't have been in all of those places. So I am very appreciative of all of their photography skills.
Thank you. And I have no other matters. Ms. Bellinger, I would love if you would bring us home this evening, please.
Thank you, I will, I will, I have a couple thoughts, I guess I'm feeling very nostalgic tonight. I appreciate the kindergarten update because I feel like I was just at the Borough School for Jack's kindergarten orientation, and at the time, somebody said to me that the days are long, but the years are short, and it is incredibly true, even a year like this one is short. So, yeah, so I guess to our kindergarten, our incoming kindergarten parents, I say embrace every minute and participate as much as you possibly can, and you will not regret a minute of it, even when you think you might, and you're really, really tired, keep on going, so. It's, it's been wonderful. I thank you so much for the flowers and the Zoom, and I'm really overwhelmed, I, it's rare that I don't have a lot to say, but I, I just feel like I'm repeating myself tonight. I know my mother's watching and she's my most ardent fan and my biggest supporter always, so I wanted to say hi to my mom and thank her for her support throughout the years, all the babysitting she has done over the years that has allowed me and my dad, too, because they would come over together and sit with the kids, and it's just been, it's been incredible to be a part of the school committee and, and see the different projects that have, have taken root and grown, mostly through Bill's doing over the years, but the Borough School renovation, when we moved to town, the Ahern School was brand-spanking new, in fact, that was one of the factors when we were looking at schools, my husband was like, well, look at this school, it's brand-new, it's fantastic, they'll go to middle school there. And, you know, the high school athletic complex, the high school renovation project, the town hall that we're sitting in, the meeting that Bruce alluded to was in the old town hall in the gala meeting room, we were all packed in there like sardines that night, the room was full, I don't know how many people sat in that room, but you had the board of selectmen and the school committee, both boards full, and all of these people in the audience that night, and, I mean, we've come so far from, from there, the public safety building when we first moved here, the police department was in the basement of the town hall, and, I mean, I know none of this has to do with school committee, it's just so many changes and so many positive changes, and it's been an honor to work on the school building committee with so many talented people on the building committee, and I will miss those meetings and I'm so excited, I would not be stepping down if the Borough School weren't so close to being done. I know, no, we're not there yet, but we're, we're almost there, and I feel like you can see the light at the end of that tunnel, and that's going to be a wonderful thing, and I do want to be invited back for, for the ribbon cutting for that, I hope so, because that's-
You don't have a choice.
I will be there.
It sounds like there might be a brick with your name on it someplace.
There are bricks, I should have noted that Bruce did the first brick project over at the Taylor School, the Taylor School Playground was one of the other, you know, Bruce was in charge of the fundraising for that, but what a project that was, and we had so many different things over the years that have been just a wonderful experience for me and my family, and I feel very grateful and blessed to have been a part of it, and I, it is, it's truly an honor and a privilege to serve as a volunteer in this town and give back to our community that has given so much to me and to my family, so, and thank you for everything you've shared with me. I don't want to cry, so I'm going to say-
Then I'll take that and say thank you again, and certainly, I want to thank your mom and dad for getting you here to us, so if there's nothing else from anybody, can I, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. And then a second for Mr. Ruder, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, 400, good night, everybody, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and we'll see you in a few weeks.